Can you please join me in the question of reading? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice. Thank you.
Councilmember Huang.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
Here.
Councilmember Tolt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dick Hahn.
Here.
And then E.
Here. Posting the agenda. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the public locations, City Hall, toll public library, and the recreation department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. Public comments. The city welcomes public input. Members of the public may address the city council by completing a public comment card and giving it to the city court prior to the meeting. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any issues not in the meeting's agenda. We reserve the right to place limits on the direction of the comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, you do. Mrs. Nancy Hoffman.
Mayor, how long until we?
Could we, three minutes, please, timed by the staff?
Any way you could bring the mic to her?
Yeah.
Nancy, you can help. It doesn't have a board.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I've got a bad ankle. I've brought you something that I was surprised that San Marino has never even thought of in the middle of all this chaos that we're having over vaccine. And all my friends are calling me and they said, well, can't you go up to Victory Park? Can't you go here? Can't you go there? I said, no, we are tied in with Pasadena, or maybe with the county. And they said, oh, you poor thing. So I called Councilwoman Gretchen, help. And so she and I talked on the phone, and she said she knew of several places, and one of them was Kaiser Hospital. She had a friend that went there. And when you call in there, they ask for your number, and if you don't have the number, you just give your phone number, and they say, fine, we'll be right with you. And her friend walked in and got the vaccine at the clinic, and that was it. Also, the same thing with, uh, 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 Peg Giba. Pardon?
Not anymore.
Pardon?
Not anymore.
Okay, anyway, so we kind of put our heads together, and it really bothers me. Here we sit in a city with fire department, and all my friends now are going into L.A. to all these fire stations to get their vaccine, and they can't come here. So I thought I'd bring this before the council. We've got an empty lot out here because no one is doing it in the school. We can have a perfect drive-through here for just the San Marino people with the firemen as the medics to do it. So that's.
I think our fire department would be ready to go. Is that correct, Chief? If so, ordained?
Mayor, would you like to keep waiting?
Keep waiting? Do you have a quick response?
Pardon?
Keep her waiting? Do you have a quick response to why the fire department is not able to issue that vaccine?
Want to?
Well, thank you. So it may not be quick, but over two months ago, the fire department applied for application to be one of the distribution sites in competition with many others. One of the difficulties was the parameters that I placed on our distributing vaccines, which was potentially residents, school district, and employees in the city that would be eligible, given the stages that were put in place. We ordered the equipment that's required. It comes here in the middle of February. But unfortunately, the state has switched programs three times, including the most recent Blue Shield oversight of the program. So we did apply for vaccines and have not been informed as to whether we'll be receiving any. And I do have volunteers that would assist with the program, but whether or not they actually allow our city to do a limited distribution is still up to the state.
Thank you.
I believe they're actually targeting resources at the mega sites, which Cal State LA would probably be our closest mega site. It's gonna come on.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And the follow-up, Chief, then what about state? Do you have any idea yet of when the opening date is? Because that would be another resource that's closer for a lot of our residents who now qualify for the 75 and up category.
Chief Contra had the most recent information, and it was February 16.
Oh, so very close. Okay, so next week, Detective. Thank you.
But if you need help, I'm a cert. Get out your certs to help you with the registration.
Thank you.
Okay. And secondly, I have another little idea here. Oh, I'm very privileged to be a senior citizen here in this community because my doorbell rang again this morning, and there is a big heart with a little, thanks to Happy Valentine's Day from Ella with red carnation and a box of candy. Where is this coming from? Huh? Right behind you.
Uh, it's programmed by the, um, our recreation department, if you will, and Director Paul Walker is right behind you, who advocated and came up with this new program.
It's wonderful. So I want to say, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that's here that would like to speak? Do we have anybody in the virtual world without a speaker?
There are no other requests for public comment.
Thank you. City manager's report. This is an opportunity for the city manager to give the community an update on what's going on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lengthy presentation I'm just sharing, and I have a few slides just to go through some basic information for you. While they're reading the presentation, I will just go ahead and save time and dive right in. The first thing that I want to do is brag a little bit about our finance department. As the council already knows, for the second year in a row, the city has received the operating budget excellence award, the fiscal year 2021, from CSMFO, which is the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. This is an outstanding honor for us and speaks well to the work of our finance director, Paul Chung, and our controller, Mark Seckery, and we really appreciate all of their work. So congratulations to them and big kudos to the community. I should be very proud. All right. At the, as a result of the report that's going to be given later this evening about the second quarter financial report, I will hold off on making any comments of my own, save to say that we continue to be in good financial condition. There are no changes that we were not expecting that the council should be aware of. And Finance Director Chung and City Treasurer Hahn will present a report a little bit later. Next, I want to focus a bit on public works. There is an interesting story here to tell. If you notice from the operating dashboard that goes out in the published city council agenda packet, there are a couple of things that happened. One is a very slight decrease in the amount of time that it takes us to respond to service orders. So this is not ideal. We were doing slightly better last month than we were doing this month. However, as many of you know, our longtime public works manager did retire at the end of December, and so we've been without that key position for the month of January, which I think is part of why the service response time is slightly lower. We are in the selection process for the new position and hope that will bounce back up. This is a reminder also to the community to use our GoGov app, which can be downloaded on the website, or to go directly to the website at www.cityofsanmarino.org/report and report in any concerns. And lest I leave you with the bags loose in your mouth, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Crystal Lecon, who gave our public works crew some high kudos for some work that they did related to a street lamp globe that fell off. She was, she was very pleased. She sent us a big thank you and for being so quick about it. So we appreciate hearing back from her. Last but not least, in terms of the city manager's report, it all comes back to COVID, of course, so just a couple of quick points here. The main item here is just for me to share with you that there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes as it relates to COVID. And I just wanted to share with you that since we saw you last and I gave my update, these things that are listed on the PowerPoint all happened. There was confirmation of the COVID-19 variants found in L.A. County. The state rescinded the regional stay-at-home order in response. The county has issued three revised health orders in just a few short weeks, and vaccine eligibility expanded to, as we just discussed, over 65 years of age, with multiple changes to the way that people can register, the way that prioritizations happen in distribution. I share this with you because I think it's important that the council and the community understand that there's a lot going on behind the scenes at the city related to COVID that you don't see. I spend a lot of time understanding how this is impacting at least the executive team's workload. And I can tell you that on average, it is taking about 30% of our time to deal with COVID-related matters, and significant amounts of that time actually are happening off-hours on weekends, evenings, and so forth. That is an average. I think our lowest person is at about 5% impacted by COVID, whereas some of our more heavier impacted people are community engagement manager, who's trying to stand on top of all these orders; our HR manager, who's dealing with the ways that these impact employees, is probably at this point over 50% of their time. So all of the work that we are doing at the city is in that compressed available time. So we appreciate the community's patience with us and understanding that we don't have the resources available that we normally do. A significant amount of those resources are going to managing the COVID situation. And even my time is probably somewhere around 40% devoted to COVID. So it is, it is alive and well, although I'm pleased to report that San Marino numbers are incrementally increasing but very slowly. We have really curbed the dramatic growth that was happening before, and we are very appreciative to remind everybody to stay safe. Last but not least, just procedurally, I would just point out a couple of things. We will be pulling item number four from the agenda tonight. It simply will not be heard. We've had some digital discussion and realized that this item is not warranted, so we apologize for that and apologize for miscommunication, but that will not be heard tonight. We also mistakenly included item date, the second quarter financial report on dissent, so we will pull that off dissent and actually hear it as a regular presentation business item, as I mentioned earlier, from Finance Director Chung and City Treasurer Hahn. That will be of the mayor's pleasure, whether you'd like to hear that before you vote on the dissent calendar or after, as you choose. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions or comments for the city manager regarding her report? Hearing none, motion to waive second reading. This action permits the city council to act on ordinance or some resolutions without having to read the entire text of the ordinance or resolution. Do I have a motion and a second to waive further readings?
I'll just waive further reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Huang?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Eadie?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We want a continued business. I have number one, approval of resolution approving salary schedule. Do we have a presentation from Human Resources Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In front of you today, for your considerations, the adoption of Resolution Number R-21-04, adopting the salary schedule. As mentioned in last month's January 29 council meeting, the full-time salaries on the salary schedule were approved this time last year through the union contracts and management agreement. The proposed changes to the salary schedule is that of many of the city's part-time positions. To be clear, there are no full-time positions that would be impacted if council was to approve tonight's resolution. Part-time employees account for roughly one-third of city staff. Most of our part-time positions serve our residents directly in our library and in recreation. Part-time employees also provide various support in our police department, city manager's office, parks and public works department, and community development department. During the last, during last month's meeting, I provided council with details regarding the increases to state's minimum wage and how the council since 2015 has only provided increases to those classifications mandating an increase. Furthermore, I discussed that the continuation of this practice is no longer sustainable as the rise of minimum wage is causing salary compaction between classifications and that many of the part-time salaries are no longer competitive in comparison to similar agencies in the area. For these reasons, over the course of the last year, staff has conducted classification and salary studies on many of the part-time positions. At last month's January 29 meeting, council adopted Resolution Number R-21-03 only to the extent that it mandates minimum wage increases. Council directed staff to provide detailed comparisons of the city's salaries against those of comparable agencies. In my report, information from the salary study along with the rationale for staff's recommendation. Last month's increase brought the classifications of library clerk two, library page, park attendant, and recreation program leader up to the minimum wage. These salary increases and the related benefits is approximately $11,000 over the last six months of the current fiscal year. Tonight's proposed salary changes will cause salaries and the related benefits expenses to increase approximately $121,000 over the last six months of the current fiscal year. At this time, no additional budget appropriations are requested, primarily due to the savings resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. These proposed salary changes will be included as part of next year's operating budget. And while I'm mentioning the fiscal impact, I would like to note that I did make a small typo on the report on the fiscal impact impairment review section on page four of the report. I erroneously typed January 29, 2020, when in fact I wanted to type January 29, 2021, last month's meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, for bringing this to our attention.
It was a head scratcher.
Well, I'm glad to be in 2021, so. All right. Finally, as mentioned in last month's meeting, during the study, it came to staff's attention that the salary for our part-time librarian one staff was actually higher than that of their full-time counterpart. With this in mind, and for other reasons outlined in the staff report, I recommend that city council align the full-time salaries with the part-time salaries to put them all on this one proposed salary schedule. Be aware that if council was to approve aligning part-time classifications to their full-time counterpart, it would reduce the salary schedule of two incumbents in the library one classification. It is for this reason that I also propose that the city council wire-rate these salaries of these positions. Wire-rating would freeze the salaries until which time that they fall within the salary range of the librarian one classification, which will occur July 1 of this year. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council, Mr. Tolt?
I have no questions. Well, I do. I just want to confirm one thing, and that is, the only people who will get any increase are those on page 114, those categories.
On 1, did you say 113?
Uh, I, no, it was 114.
114. That is not entirely correct, no, because we also have the classifications of librarian two, code enforcement officer, and librarian one. Those are classifications that we have full-time equivalents, and so there wasn't a salary study conducted on those because the equivalent would be, for our city, would be those full-time positions.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
No.
No, thank you, thank you. Dr. Rom?
No, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Shepherd-Romney?
Yes, I have a question on manager's bill. Going to that same page, 124, in the, or page 18 of our notebook now, Council member. So we're all together. The first line there in your table says, and I'm quoting, fixing classifications at minimum wage. That's different than the action that we took last month where we were bringing people who are below minimum wage. So can you explain, because that is a much greater number of 42,000 for quarters, or for half the year, so essentially 84,000 should be implemented, and it affects 36 positions. So can you explain how that pans out for me?
Certainly, and I think the best way to do that is to go to page two of the report, where I kind of outlined a really a great example of what's been occurring over the last five years. We have classifications in the library series where you have the library clerk two, library clerk one, and library page. And at one point in time, the library clerk two made $2.78 more than the library page. However, you know, that's roughly a 25% difference. However, over the course of the last five years, with the minimum wage increases and us only increasing the library page and the library clerk one, it's got to the point now where we're actually going above the library clerk two. And so in the course of the last two years, we've actually eliminated the library clerk one because we're having those, those duties being performed by the library clerk two. And, but the thing is, we still need a differentiation. So even though we're eliminating library clerk one, we can't have library page and library clerk two making the same exact salary. So what I tried to do is looking at both the salary data that I collected from comparable agencies, along with looking at within the internal alignment of our salaries, I came up with this recommended increase. And so that's, that's what you're going to see with, within those, within those that are at that minimum wage. And then additionally, what you'll notice in that example on page two is because we've only done the minimum wage, we've gotten to the point where we've eliminated salary steps for that, for those classifications. And the standard is, is usually you have some type of opportunity for staff who've worked here a long time and have connections with the community to be able to make increases over, you know, over a certain time period.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, let's just take the example of the library page. So library page was one of those ones that we had to move from $13 to $14, if I'm reading correctly. But now you're advocating that we continue to, in this category of things. Your statement, or the page I'm referring to, page 114, for example, if you look at the line regarding library page, it's also going to be in addition, if we approve all of these changes today, tonight, as opposed to just the minimum wage, which helps them by a dollar per hour, then the library page is now going to go up to 15.44.
Those that are, those that have been here for, you know, a certain amount of time and have earned that, that salary step of C, but like new individuals that come in, they would come in at step A, which would be the minimum wage.
Because then if you look back on page two, you don't have the steps under the salaries approved tonight, or all, the steps are all 14. So I don't know where the steps are, I guess.
So the salary schedule, if you look on page 119, at the bottom, you'll see where we have like the recreation program leader at the bottom, and then the other.
Third up, right?
Yeah, those, those bottom three, which are at 14 starting, and then can go up to 15.44. And then you'll see where I put the library clerk, and I tried to create a little bit of space there.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have any further questions. This item is now open for public comment. Would anybody that is here like to speak? Seeing none, are there anybody in the virtual world that would like to comment?
There are no public comments for this.
Then I'd like to bring it back to the council for discussion. Do I have any comments or questions? Dr. Rom?
No one can support this, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tolt?
I, one of my problems is that this seems to be taken out of our typical, of looking at these types of things. And, and a lot of times we will have an honest and candid discussion regarding employment issues behind, or in closed session. We haven't been given that opportunity in this instance. And so given that there's a change of process, I'm having difficulty, although I understand the situation getting behind, and understanding how a, a simple change of 10 classifications for part-time employees is going to cost us $20,000 a month. Now, as I understand it also, these people are not going to be coming back for more next year when we get around to making a change. And that this is also a change that hasn't been made for five years, I believe, which maybe there has been some changes because of the increase in, in the minimum wage. I just have a real trouble getting my head around doing this now when we get into the budget process and we take a look at these things as part of the budget, maybe doing it right. Because I just feel this is a bit rushed, although I know you've been working on it for a while, at least from my standpoint it is. So although I generally support the idea that we should be fair and reasonable to our employees, I just don't feel like I am, I can't support this issue at this point. I might be there when we get around to discussing the budget next year, but right now I just can't do it.
Hey, Shepherd-Romney? Any comments or thoughts?
I am appreciative of the work that went into this, and I know that it took a lot of time to put together a can-magic puzzle, math steps that you take, so I appreciate that. And I think it's very important, given that our part-time help and staff in a lot of these categories, we do excellent work, and have been here a long time, have been without a raise for a significant period, and just catching them up to minimum wage, and then that leads to all these other issues. I really appreciate that we have a way to reflect the excellent work in our city of our employees. The only problem that I have with this, and I guess, and I didn't ask the question about it, is the, is kind of the salary schedule and the higher management, there's a discussion here about the city manager, so I don't know if that's part of this. I'm referring to page, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it, 1.3, partway down, you talk about how this involves the city manager and management calculations for prospective employees. Are we changing some things that involve city council network?
No, like I, like I mentioned earlier, the only salaries that would be changing are those for the part-time. This is just a matter of getting all of them on one schedule.
All right. Then I can support this, and although I know that it will be a cost to our city of even more than $264,000 a year, starting next year with a 2% salary increase, that is a significant step. Will they be also getting the same cost of living adjustments as our other employees?
No.
Okay. Thank you, then I can support.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any thoughts, comments?
Sure, thank you. And I do appreciate all the work that you put into this. Perhaps maybe a little bit less would have made it simpler for me, but I can support, and I totally understand where you are going and where we need to go on this, so thank you.
Thank you, I just appreciate your work you've put into this, but I, you know, appreciate Councilmember Tolt's comments as well about, I think we won't look in the future, all salary compensation things in one package at one time, so we can understand the totality of it. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, I'm looking to adopt Resolution Number R-21-04, approving the salary schedule and wire-rating the part-time employees in the library one classification.
Thank you. Is there a second?
And I meant that Number R-21-03.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, hold on. The, two separate. The resolution number was R-21-4?
03.
04.
04?
Okay, that, that.
I'm sorry, it's my mistake.
No, you're right. It was our mistake that we did not correct that in the new ordinance, because this is still the number from the 102, so, but it is R-21-4. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I think it's still in here as an attachment from the last one, so it is a little bit confusing, so.
Okay, second.
All right, thank you very much. Back to the roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Huang?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolt?
I can't just vote present? I'm going to vote yes. This is something that should be unanimous. I'm going to vote yes, this is something that should be unanimous, and it's obviously going against my thoughts, so yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Fine, thank you very much, motion passed.
Let's move on now to item number two, the introduction and first reading of ordinance regarding public nuisance proceedings. He's having a presentation of Director Sivantes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is pertaining to an ordinance that helps streamline our public nuisance proceedings, which is a major code enforcement tool that's within our department. We've discussed this in length in the last meeting, there were quite a bit of comments that were incorporated into the, or changed and incorporated into the ordinance, which are now in the draft document attached. And so, the ordinance is now ready to go for first reading. A great summary of these steps involved are on page 2-2 or page 36 of the agenda packet. And with that said, I'd like to open for questions. But first, the recommendation of staff is that the city council wait for reading of the ordinance and introduce for first reading by title-only ordinance number 21-1379, and now I open for questions.
Thank you. See if there are any questions from council. Ms. Shepherd-Romey, do you have any questions?
I just, one question concerning the timing. How much time do you think this will help shorten by taking some of the steps and combining them like you proposed with this? Because I know that that's a big issue in public nuisance matters, that the house might continue to sit for, to go through all the steps that we've presented.
We're looking at at least about a four or five week reduction in time frame, if this is in place.
I think this would be a great improvement, and I appreciate the work.
Thank you, Dr. Wong, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Tull, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just to point to clarification, I really like the way this looks, I think there's been a lot of detail added, and there should be no confusion or ambiguity for any property owner, thank you. Under, one quick question, under recovery of costs, and this is maybe just my naivete in not understanding these terms, in the first paragraph, according to, or, I'm sorry, recording a nuisance abatement lien, and the other option of a special assessment, can you just talk a little bit about those? So, if somebody, if the city does the work and we have to bill the owner, do we first attempt to, say, send them a bill? Or does it automatically go over to one of these two more serious measures?
The one that I'm most familiar with is the property lien, which is when the property changes hands, we collect, we recover the cost at that point.
But, but just to see, and again, that's a sure way of always getting your money, just like a contractor's lien or whatever, but might it help us for business sense, say the city's got to put out $10,000, $15,000 on this, to just write a letter and say, hey, we had to do this work for you, you want to send us a check? If you remember, we had that miracle happen once, with a man who took his checkbook out for trees, he took it down and wrote $25,000 on the spot.
I do.
That's, it couldn't happen again. Is it, is it just not common practice to say, here's a bill?
Yeah, it's, it's, we can certainly go down the path of providing a bill, the issue is, of course, chasing that bill.
Sure, and at that point, you know...
And that always goes in line with the penalty is, or fine is, you have to chase that.
Absolutely.
The one thing that I would say that is different from issuing a bill, in this case, is you're issuing the bill to a property, a fixed location, where you don't have to necessarily chase that bill for the payment, because...
I understand.
It's tied to ownership.
I know.
Than if you're issuing a penalty to a contractor, for another example.
It was just a quick step to see if someone might just say, sure, I do owe you this money, here's a check, rather than waiting 30 years till they sell the house. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I have no further questions. I'd like to open this up for public comments. Is anyone here tonight wish to speak on this topic? Seeing none, is there anyone in the virtual world that would like to speak?
There are requests for public comment.
Thank you very much, I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Wong?
No, but thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Tull?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Shepherd-Romey?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No, so ready, thank you.
Do I have a motion, please?
I move...
You go ahead, please. I move to include an additional full... Sorry.
Then I'm going to, I moved to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title-only ordinance number O-21-1379, an ordinance of the city of San Marino, admitting the serious abuse of code-related nuisance and base.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tull?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
And we'd like to move on to our third item, approval of an additional full-time code enforcement officer, Councilor Sivantes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. On January 29th, 2021, the city council expressed interest in adding an additional code enforcement officer to the department to help our re-envisioning plan, as well as to support a more proactive code enforcement program. Of course, it goes without saying that I do appreciate staff support, our council support with respect to the program. It did, it was very encouraging to hear the entire council share their support with respect to this program, and of course, to the re-envisioning. Staff did feel it necessary to return to the council quickly on this matter, to sort of keep up that momentum of that conversation, as well as to align staff's goals with that of the council. The main objective of this request is to take our proactive approach to really the next level. Our code enforcement team continues to push forward and introduce new concepts and ideas for a more proactive division. Our program begins with field observations, finding the violation, and of course, facilitating a quick turnaround on compliance. Of the 93 open cases currently, 51% were created by the division internally. This is due mainly through the efforts of our current staff and being out in the neighborhoods. In comparison, the city of Monrovia code team only generates about 25% of their cases through their staff efforts. Moreover, they take a reactive approach, and we take a proactive approach. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, the division has closed about 376 cases. In addition, since the start of the fiscal year, the division saw an average rate of 25 days from the time a case was opened to closure, although I will admit there were some outliers that were out there that took a little bit longer than that. As expressed last month, the current team includes a manager, one full-time officer, and a part-time officer. We currently have a vacancy in the current full-time position that we hope to fill in the next two weeks. The division also relies on myself performing some of the duties as an officer. To be specific, I conduct surveys to find vacant properties, and have been putting together a list of those that are, that are registered, non-vacant, or if unresponsive, issue a notice of violation. The division also relies heavily on our police department for after-hours inspections. And they also spend a considerable amount of time in code violations. On average, I spend about two to three hours a day on code enforcement matters. The police department will spend about 50 minutes or so of their time dedicated to code enforcement matters during after-hours. Last year, the police department responded to approximately 184 code-related cases. Given this information, it is critical that the division include additional resources to help free up time for myself, as well as for the police department, and to provide the necessary support for a code enforcement manager. And this is, of course, critical to perform the duties necessary as manager to lead the team, and more specifically, to allow him or her to market, provide messaging for the division, monitoring the various matrix that we provide, evaluating resources and time, the ability of pivot towards new objectives, improving the mobile application, GoGov app, improving public relations, and of course, leading the division. None of these are possible at the time, since the manager is relied upon as being one of the boots on the ground, as well as myself. Given this current state, I have no choice but to intervene in the division to help, which takes me away from other key roles from the city. With ongoing long and short-term projects, such as the San Marino Center EIR, the housing element update, and the implementation within the next eight years, economic development program, monitoring housing laws, future code amendments, and a potential general plan update, it would be beneficial for the department and the city to provide this additional officer. Although staff has provided the council with options on this matter, staff recommends the city council approve the additional full-time code enforcement officer position, and direct staff to appropriate the additional fines. Any open or questions?
Thank you, I do have questions from council? Dr. Wong, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd-Romey, any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, I don't know how you do all that you do well, so Director Sivantes, I congratulate you, and I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. If you can help take some of what, a little bit off of your plate, then I am supportive. My issue, I guess, is, are a couple things. I want to know, in my mind, it's important to give the residents, if we're going to offer them the GoGov app, which I use, as you know, and other people are starting to, that we have a quick response, because as far as to have that sort of, like, you're out there, you, you know, recognize some problems, and sometimes they're quite beyond a vacant house or disrepair, but there's really, I don't know, water running, something that needs quick solutions. And I'm concerned with the amount of cases that has even grown in one month since your one full-time person has left, and it seems like now, just today, we saw in the report from city manager that cases start at 85 and 75, and now they're at 93. So you're already getting kind of this stacking, and I'm worried, without another person, that we're really going to be, and I expect, because of the holidays and COVID, I expect these, whatever, reports or claims, if you will, will continue to rise, and you'll regularly get a lot more than you do now. So in order to make it work, I think that it's necessary, and I'm just trying to think of, when I look at the fiscal impact, which concerns me, obviously, we need to be financially prudent, as a, or I do, I feel like in my role as a council member, and I'm thinking, are there any ways that we can get cost recovery for the time, whether it's your time or a person's time? I know that there's, how is the client structure associated with this? And can we, I know we have a lot of work to do, one of your many jobs is to redo all the client structures and reflect, but I'm really wondering, is there something that we can do in this case, because often you're having to return and spend a lot of time on these matters? Of course, it varies, and so, can there be something that reflects the amount of time, and that would go toward offsetting, if we, if you realize a greater amount of recovery in care, but that would obviously offset this person's salary?
And that's, that's a great, great question, actually. I've never heard of a code enforcement division having cost recovery as compared to planning or building, where there are user fees, and that's how we recover some of the services. The code enforcement is sort of that, that division that is, is not tied to fees or anything like that. Of course, I might have to defer to Paul, if he has oral finance records, to see if he's got any ideas. Right now, I, I think that's a great question, and I think it needs vetting to some, to some degree. But in my experience, I, I haven't seen a cost recovery process for this division.
Well, and it might be something that it's only if you get to the, you know, after the, you know, the amount of time it takes and repeated efforts, there might be something. I don't know, but I think that there should be in this regard, because it clearly will cost the city a lot, and I expect we're going to get a lot of that, as this goes forward, and you've got a public education campaign for residents, I think there probably will be a lot more work in this regard. So I'm very much looking toward the future, and thinking that it's going to take a lot of time, that justifies another person in my mind, to get a handle on this and get quick responses like we like. But I'm also thinking, is there a way, because this is obviously an additional cost to the city that could be passed on to the party, should they be ultimately like, not somebody who doesn't know that they have a strength or a, but, you know, somebody who really has, doesn't really just want to take action.
Let us look at that. That's a very interesting idea.
Okay, so, I'm just throwing that out there as a question, and we'll air in time what we might do with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tull, any questions?
Aren't there code violations and resulted fines?
There are a few. The, the majority of the code violations that we deal with are zoning and building-related. Our code requires that upon the visibility of that violation, we are ordered to provide a notice of compliance. We can't respond with a citation upfront. Elements that are, that are related to public safety matters certainly can, can result in, in a civil fine upfront, which would be $100, and it climbs to $200 and then $500 for the loss events. The...
You may answer my question.
Oh.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a number, I'll try to go as quickly as I can, okay? Okay, so you, you have 93 open, and 53 were created, I'll call it proactively, meaning internally, and 40 reactive to what the public is, is bringing. You mentioned building and zoning. Of the 93, do you have a general category breakdown of those?
I do. In front of me, I don't, but I, I can tell you that a majority of those are going to be property appearance matters.
So, are you getting the same number of reports from the public about property appearance, which we would call nuisance, or has that number gone up or down?
It's usually gone up.
Okay. And that ties in then to the vacant home and the nuisance going forward. If I remember correctly, when we discussed that item, you were talking about breaking it down for your code enforcement officers to cover geographic areas, which I thought was a great idea. So then, what you're proposing is that this would tie into that concept also?
Absolutely. If the council remembers a loss of a report, I look to put together a game plan that basically splits, you know, splits the workload from east to west San Marino, as well as the commercial corridors. That way, we can sort of balance the workload for each individual, and then switch it up every so often, that way it's sort of a balanced approach.
And for fresh eyes, sure.
Correct.
Few more questions. You said you had, in your report, two excellent candidates now. Without going into a lot of detail, are they currently doing this kind of work?
Yes.
And when do they state their availability would begin?
The vacant position that we currently have, we've gone through a process for that. The position's been offered, there's a start date that will be very soon.
Okay.
The second individual will sort of work with that internally at this point, without having to share a lot of personality issues.
Okay. Following up where Councilwoman Shepherd-Romey was speaking about using the app, it just happens that I run into more at-the-moment type of things, rather than what I would call maybe stagnant. Do you envision some type of 24/7 response, so those of us who want to do something at 7:30 in the morning don't have to go through three or four phone numbers to find the person who's going to pick up? Do you, either a hotline, or something that wouldn't be app? App would be absolutely fine for nuisance appearance. But again, as Councilwoman mentioned, there's something, even if it's just pouring water. Is there anything in the works for that? And if not, how soon could that occur, since you're looking to bring up your enforcement to be able to have better reporting from the public?
Yeah, that's also a great idea as well, and the individual that would be responsible for that kind of a hotline or phone number would be our manager. And with that ability of having hotline, can certainly communicate out to a code enforcement officer. In this case, it will likely be the part-time individual to respond to those cases, if not, through the help of our, our police department.
And as I mentioned last time, I think it's crucial for our residents. I have gotten a few phone calls on this, and I wrote that somebody said to me, um... And I wrote that somebody said to me, will we be getting more bang for our buck? We really want to see more results. And I think in that instance, it would be crucial to close the loop with reporters. Because when people say to me, I report something, I don't know if it's taken care of. So if we could do that hotline and have that loop closed, that would be very helpful for residents. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is, can you give what you think you would have as a sketch of the hours and the days of the week regarding coverage among the staff who would be doing this, leaving yourself out?
Well, I actually enjoy being out in the field, but I guess-
Too bad.
You know, yes, too bad. That, that's certainly part of the program is to, is to share the hours of operation or the hours that are a person that will be available.
So are we talking seven days a week? Are we, okay, so there would be seven-day coverage. And as early as and as late as?
Yes, certainly.
What hours?
As early as six in the morning. We've, we've done that before. We've had personnel out as late as 8:00 p.m. on any given day, so that's a possibility.
Okay, so you might play around with hours for a little bit to see where you really have the greatest need for the residents?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for all the questions.
Thank you. I have no further questions, so I'd like to open up for public comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a comment? Seeing that, is there anyone in the digital world, virtual world that would like to make a comment?
There are no requests for comment on this.
I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Paul, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Well, I just want to commend Director Sartes for his proaction in this regard. I typically trust your opinion in a lot of these things and with the way you run the department. However, the way I look at employees here at the city and, as I said in the group, do we, you know, when we take a look at the structure overall, can we move a person's responsibility? Can we do this? Can we do that? In order that we do not increase our workforce such that it's eating up a tremendous amount of our budget? And, you know, especially right now. So I, I'd want to see something more substantial as to how this person is going to fit in. And that is why I would support your recognition number three. And that is to, to really take a hard look as to whether we do indeed need a third person. And it's not just driven by the amount of complaints we have, but, but also what that person's going to be doing. And granted, just because we have more than one, excuse me, I'm sorry. Just because we have more than one good candidate shouldn't be the driving force as to whether or not we should increase somebody. If that's the case, then, you know, we, we just go out and hire as many people as possible without knowing what their responsibilities are, because we believe they're good. So I am, I am going to vote no on this on the basis that, without seeing substantially more as to where this person fits in, what this person's job responsibilities are, and it give you an opportunity to actually do something when you go out and approve, okay, we've got this guy to do this person, we have this person to do this job responsibility. I think it just behooves us to wait and deal with this in our normal cycle. But I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention. There's only a couple months, and we're only starting, so.
Thank you, Dr. Wong.
I have a question. Couple months? I mean, you have to wait till the budget process over, which will be May or June, right?
Okay, please, sorry.
I mean, no, my question is that, you know, if you don't do this now, we'd wait until we're done with the budget process, budget process. So that would be like in May or June? So it's like, going to be like four, five months?
Well, it would be July 1st, when it would end first. Like, we would plan, option three is planning for that by July 1st.
Yes, I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
I can support this, and I strongly advocate for the now the public nuisance ordinance that's going to hopefully move faster. And I believe that the present circumstance, they were already busy and overworked and having another person here would be wrong in our city. Since it is an important aspect of city management, our residents care a lot about what happens to the properties surrounding them, as well as we have an increasing amount of vacant homes that we need. Unfortunately, maybe it goes to the cost for the vacant homes, maybe that's where it comes from. But I believe that we can find some cost savings here. This person is absolutely necessary to carry out what we feel are important concerns for our residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any thoughts? Chair?
I, I, first of all, thank you. Again, well-written. And I deeply appreciate Councilwoman Todd's thoughts. But I'm also feeling the urgency. I am hearing more residents telling me that they're making reports. I'm seeing more unkempt properties. I'm seeing more construction issues. I think I mentioned to you, going out on a morning walk and saw, seeing those semis lined up in a red zone, were at risk for, you know, some serious accidents when those things are going on. And I get it that your staff can't be all places at all times. I could support this, but I'd really like to do it with the provision that this have written provisions for really stepping up the game and as soon as possible, finding whatever the method is for any resident to be able to report 24/7. And for every resident or whomever makes a report to get a call back and be given the status of what has occurred. I understand that you can't do that right now with the staffing issues, but I think it's crucial. And I think this does tie in to the vacant home nuisance ordinance. And if we are going to support that, these two go hand in hand. But I know that you, with your oversight and not boots on the ground, would be putting all these pieces together so that we would have something, not just for accountability to the council, but to the community. That's where I owe my accountability. And this is really a hot issue right now. I hear from a lot of people. So that would be what I would hope would happen if we are to indeed support it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sartes. Thank you and your team for all your hard work and the quality of the work that you do and for jumping on this so quickly. I am kind of the school, or the old school, though, that with the staffing and the budgeting, they, they go hand in hand. And since we're only a few months away from that, my, my instincts would be to, you know, take this good, good work to heart, but delay the final decision. Is there any motion for you?
I move to include an additional-
Yes.
I think, I was reading the last time, but all right, we've got to go a little early. I move to include an additional full-time code enforcement officer to the city's operating budget and approve additional budget appropriation in the amount of $32,948 in fiscal year 2020-21, to be spread over the effective full-time personnel budget line items, as shown at the respective ones.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
May I make a friendly amendment? And to, and to include robust reporting on a regular basis and-
That's probably not this, sorry.
No, I'm trying to find the thing for the calling. We want this, if we're bringing this person on now, we want to have these other pieces in place that include, for example, a hotline or something to that effect, rather than just steps. If there's not support for it, I'll drop it.
How should we say? I suspect you can just direct me to do that. I think we've heard you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I will take a council member, Jacob Jikavoski's friendly attempt at a minute, that it's very important that we get like a 48-hour, 72-hour, and a weekend, et cetera, but a commitment of some type of notice and then a closure time. So there's two points, but I would like, I think residents need that they're, understand whoever they put in their request, whether it's the app or otherwise, a phone call, not that they get some acknowledgement that it's there and it's an item, and then whatever the closure is, by email or, or personally by phone.
Should this pass, we will be delighted to report that. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
No.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Now moving on to new business, item four withdrawn. Item five, the authorization to upgrade existing radio equipment with encrypted doors from Foothill Communications, and an amount have to exceed $17,277. And approve, and appropriation from the Capital Improvement Fund Reserve. Chief Contra, we have a discussion for you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You have the report in front of you. In October of this, of 2020, we received correspondence from the California Department of Justice that indicated law enforcement agencies must encrypt their radio transmissions. And with that, since it came out of the regular budget process, we did not have the ability and we had not the knowledge prior to October to get this done. The reason for that is officers on a regular basis broadcast through their handheld radios and dispatch, also broadcast through the dispatch radio, right-to-know, need-to-know, and official duty information, which contains personal information of the person. It provides more information if someone's wanted for a, a crime they've committed. If we are investigating a possible suspect, we would broadcast information about who they are, even though they may not or, may not be involved in a crime. Additionally, this encryption will provide us some tactical information or the ability to broadcast information tactically during a crime in progress, serious event occurring, or disaster. The other departments in Los Angeles County, we all use the same radio system. And if they broadcast and encrypt all their frequencies, we would no longer be able to communicate with these agencies. We would only be able to communicate with ourselves. We would have to find another means to give the information to our dispatch center that would check on criminal information. Not only was it from the California Department of Justice, but also from the FBI through what we call SEJUS, which is a federal level of Department of Justice for criminal information. We are going to utilize our current contract with Foothill Communications that provides a service to repair our radios. We did not go outside for three bids. This is a company we've been using. We had a prior company that was not as good. This one provides outstanding service and was able to do the work quickly. We recommend the approval of a one-time expense of $17,267 for the upgrade to the current radio equipment with encryption boards to ensure compliance with the SEJUS and DOJ orders.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions? I'd like to open up for any questions from council. Mr. Paul, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
I do have a question, and it concerns that, that not getting other folks from vendors. And I wanted to support that. Foothill Communications, the only people who make encryption, this, this type of- kind of, or equipment?
It's a digital change to the frequency. And they currently work on all of our equipment and other agencies. As I said, we've used other companies in the past, and we currently are extremely pleased with what they do. They are responsive, and we believe it's the best, will provide us the best service.
But so they're not the only ones who do this?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any questions?
No, I don't have a question. Thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
No, thank you, Chief. No questions.
I do not have any questions. I'd like to open this up for public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Are there any comments from the digital world?
There are no requests for comment on this side.
Thank you. Bring that back to council for discussion. Dr. Wong, any thoughts or comments?
No, I don't have any comments. I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney does raise an interesting point, which now raises a question in my, my mind. So you'll excuse me if I ask a question. But do we know if we're required to get additional? But this is under $30,000. So, and I think this is for the finance director. Do we need any decision in writing by you in order to do this?
Yes, so during the review, I reviewed the requirements for the bidding process. Being that this is under $30,000, it's an informal bid. I did talk to the chief, and after review, it made the most sense and best interest for the city to just move forward with Foothill Communications.
Have you, have you done that in writing?
Well, in the staff report, the fiscal section, that's where I agreed on the, the requirement of-
Go to 5.3, and then set the right of obligation, which is please get finance.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Shepherd-Romney?
My only concern is, again, getting lapped. We seem to be getting away from getting lapped of bids. And I believe that that's one of the things that our city should be doing. Our residents expect us to exercise a lot of fiscal prudence and financial responsibility and be transparent. And I know, I'm concerned that we are, in this meeting alone, I think everything before us has no alternative. So I, I have a problem with this. Not that I do in the context. I want you to get this. And obviously, command it, so I strongly would stand what we need to stand in order to speed it. However, I would like to see supporting or competitive bids, or at least the effort to get it if you cannot, or a person, a department can't because of circumstances, nobody did, but I'm standing up. That should be our policy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I appreciate those thoughts. I, I think the relationship that exists is probably what's going to allow me to be supportive of this, along with the allowance that we have in our operations. So because it is this specific company that you had faith in, I'm comfortable in going forward.
Thank you. I think Ms. Shepherd-Romney brings up some great points. I think we need to make sure we are disciplined on our bidding process going forward. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the one-time expense to upgrade that existing radio equipment with encryption boards from Foothill Communications and appropriation of $17,267 to account 591-30-4613-0591 from the Capital Improvement Fund Reserve for the purchase.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I'm sorry, Chief, I'm an L.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
With the council's permission, we'd like to ask for the financial report now, since it is new business. If you're okay with that?
Yep.
If you're concerned with the-
No.
Molly, any?
Would you like to be refused?
Okay. We will see that now.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'll be presenting, myself and the city treasurer will be presenting the financial status report for the second quarter. This covers October through December. And tonight, I'll, I'll cover the fiscal section, and then the city treasurer will go over the cash and investments report. We'll take a little pause there, take questions. And then we'll move on to, we have something new here. The capital improvement project status update. This is really from a recommendation from the finance liaison that I meet monthly. They said that if we could do maybe one-off during the quarterly updates with special topics of interest. So being that we're six months in, we're going to take this opportunity to just give you an update on where we are with our CIPs. So I'll begin with the fiscal section. So I'll begin with the fiscal section. We, with revenue, we brought in eleven point six million dollars year-to-date versus eleven point nine million dollars versus prior year. I just wanted to highlight on the general fund side, even though we're about two percent less than last year, there's a couple of things to remember, last year we were at the highest revenue, historic revenue we've ever had been for the city, so it's a big comp, comp to compare us to, but also at the same time, we are of course during this period in COVID. But I do want to highlight that property tax came in above five percent of last year, so we are doing really well on the property tax side, community development continues to be strong at two to three percent higher than last year. But obviously on the COVID impact, we have the facility closures due to the library and recreation programs being shut down, those revenues are not as high as of course last year. And also yields are lower as treasury yields continue to be low due to the COVID impact. On the public safety fund side, we do see some areas of impact due to parking citations as we decided to not issue parking citations, but also it's offset by ambulance revenues that continue to come in higher than last year. On the expenditure side, we were twelve point two million dollars versus last year's eleven point six, six million dollars, and this is another area where it's not a true apples-to-apples comparison as last year, as if you remember, the MOU negotiations were still in progress, and they were, take effect till February of twenty-two, uh, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, sorry, two thousand and twenty, so that expenditure was not really captured last year, so that's where you do see a disparity, but at the same time, general fund, we're still somewhat lower on the expenditure side versus last year, and that's really due to savings that we are seeing on the COVID side, due to some of the facility closures that were seen. On the public safety side, it is still somewhat higher, and as I mentioned, some of this due to the MOUs being higher, was not captured last year, but at the same time, we had our CalPERS and then COVID expenses, strike team, we also had a strike deployment this fiscal year, so that also has brought up the expenditure a little bit higher than we were last year. Moving on to the net income for the quarter, general fund, we did have a higher net income overall, so that is a positive sign, but also on the public safety fund side as well, we remained slightly lower on the income side, net income side, as there were some strike deployment, also slightly less on the revenue side on the public safety fund side, but as anticipated. Lastly, the fund balance, we remain higher than last year, which is a good sign, thirteen point nine million dollars as of December thirty-third versus last year's twelve point seven million dollars. And also on the CIP fund, we ended December sixteen point five million versus the thirteen point eight million dollars last year. I'll bring it over to Annie for the next two slides.
I'm going to provide a quick update on the next two, two slides, the first one is our total cash and investments for as of December thirtieth, thirty-first of two thousand and twenty versus December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. As of the end of nineteen, our total cash and investment was thirty-three million, three-eighty-nine, nine-eighty-six. A year later, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty, our total cash and investments was at thirty-three million, seven-oh-three, four-ninety-four, it's almost the same, almost the same, with the difference of three hundred thousand dollars, which is about one percent difference. And the next slide, this is a rate comparison between short-term rate of one-year treasury, five-year treasury, late rate, and R yield. And if you look at the chart, the lowest one on the bottom, the gray one, and that's one-year treasury, it's yielding at zero point one percent. And the one above that, that's the purple one, that's five-year treasury, is at zero point three-six percent as of December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. The red line is late rate, as year-end, it was zero point five-four percent. And R rate, city rate, which is the blue one, it was at zero point seven-two percent. And this is what this chart is telling us.
We'll take a quick pause there, and if you have any questions regarding the fiscal side of the report, Annie and I are here to take the questions.
Can I just ask, in, quickly, you said that our city yield was zero point seven-two percent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and that is.
Zero point seven-two?
Zero point seven-two, and that's a combined of short-term rate, which is our money market rate as of December thirty-first, was at zero point six-eight percent, late was at zero point five-four.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Yes.
I, I had misplaced desk, so, shock.
Yeah.
You have any further questions, Mr. Wong?
Um, yes, I do, but thank you. The, in, in any of these reports, are we seeing revenues generated from repayment by either the federal state for strike team or for the COVID nineteen?
Yes, so for both, on the strike team side, I do not know off the top of my head how much we got reimbursed so far, I think eighty thousand dollars is kind of ringing on my, on my mind, but I believe we got some of the strike team reimbursed, we still have some outstanding reimbursements from, was it the City of Monrovia, I believe that, that's doing our reimbursement for behalf of the city, so we are still, we still have some outstanding strike team reimbursement we're waiting on.
So like anything else, there's expenditures we've had, still waiting for the reimbursed revenue. What about for COVID nineteen?
So on the COVID side, we also have received a total of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars through the CARE Act, but of course, we have, to this day, year-to-date or life-to-date actually, COVID, we've expended more than the hundred and eighty-one thousand, so the accounting manager and I have been looking into FEMA reimbursement for the other portions that we are due for reimbursement.
Now, oh, thank you. The revenues for the public safety fund, that includes the ticket revenue, is that why there's a decrease year-over-year, year-quarter over year-quarter? If, if I take a look at, it says public safe net income for the quarter, it shows that it's down sixty-six thousand, one-seventeen, what all goes into the public safety fund revenue?
Well, I would say it's split into two, the PD side, of course, and PD, the majority of the revenue, their bulk of it is parking citations, and as you know, parking citations, we haven't been issuing that since COVID, so we haven't been collecting revenue on that side. On the, of course, on the public safety side, there's also the public safety parcel tax, it's the big one that I'm forgetting right now, but that's the big portion that's reflected there as well.
Is, are those collections on the parcel tax down at all, or the offset is, if those have gone up, it's just that our offset of not collecting other fees and tickets is causing the, the offset to be low?
So for the public parcel tax portion, it's actually equal to what it was last year.
Okay.
Council has opportunity to increase that amount, we did not do that, or the council did not adopt to do that, so it's the same amount, there's no change there. But on the property tax side, we've seen a big, but that's on the general fund side, but we've seen a big increase, a five percent increase on the property tax side on the general fund.
Is that based on guidance posted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, no more questions.
Dr. Wong, any questions?
Yes, can you explain again for the general fund revenues, why the prior year was at the highest, you said? The ten million.
Ten, ten million dollars from prior year?
Yeah.
Why was it the highest?
Yeah, I don't know if you can get that mystery, but the.
It's historically, I don't have a trend line, but if we look at historically, last year, this time last year, we had the highest amount of revenue that we've collected for the city, and that's just because of property tax, of course, was the main driver, as property tax throughout the years have increased, and that's the main driver, but there were other ones regards to just overall services, community development continued to be strong, sales tax at that time was continued to be the highest it's been historically, so all of that was last year, obviously before COVID.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Rome?
I do have a question, related to what councilmember Tal, I'm wondering, and I don't know if it's broken out in here, are the amount of, are we able to bill for our fire departments near medic when they service, have city transportation or emergency? And if so, I thought we were doing that, and if so, that the COVID act at any level or the situation, I'm not sure who would be, from our purposes included, are we trying to, from doing the regular billing that we used to do, or are we reimbursing it some other way?
Let me try to answer that question, and then if I'm not answering it, we can collect it now. So regards to the ambulance, revenues that we collect in the ambulance side, we, we've continued to do that, and that's one area that we've seen an increase year-over-year. Regards to, when you mentioned outside of the city, that's, that's all part of the ambulance reimbursement that the city does bill for.
Right, okay, and the COVID pandemic, when you have the healthcare, if you will, provision has not affected our funding rate for?
No.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. You had said that property taxes were up five percent this year, one year ago, what was that percentage increase that property taxes were up?
I believe that was close to four point three, it could be an odd by a couple of digits, base points, but yeah, it should be close to four point three.
Okay, so even a little bit more than you before. Slight, slight greater percentage increase.
Yes, during the budget process, for this particular year, I forecasted five point two percent increase in property tax, we're near that, we have, of course, we're going to get our larger portion in April, and that's where we'll probably see the best picture, overall picture.
So we could really even theoretically go above your projection?
I'm expecting that to be higher than five percent now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions, thank you for the information.
Okay. Let me hop on to the CIP portion of the, excuse me. As I mentioned, this is just a one-off of the recommendation from the finance liaison, so moving forward every quarter, I wanted to add a, a different topic to the quarterly report. So on the capital side, we are six months in, and this graph here wanted to show that historically from fiscal year thirteen fourteen to what we are now, budgeted at twenty-twenty-one, as you can see, there's a huge increase in twenty-twenty-one, and that's because we budgeted close to ten million dollars in CIP this year, and we, we expect that trend to continue as we are utilizing more of our, our funds and focusing on CIP, building up the infrastructure, also deferred maintenance, and then also equipment. Street rehabilitation, street work, that's bulk of our, our CIP expense, we budgeted three point five million dollars this year, we spent two point five million dollars, so there's a budget savings there. Sidewalk replacements, we budgeted four hundred and thirty thousand, spent three hundred and ninety-one thousand, so also under budget. Streetlight management plan, we budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars, again, we spent thirty-six thousand dollars so far, as this project continues. And then this slide here, wanted to show the council what projects Michael Throne and his group has accomplished in the six months, quite a bit of projects here listed, on the right column, there's under, over budgets, meaning anything in parentheses means it went over budget, but as you can see, there's only one project that really went over budget, the Lacy Park restroom upgrades, but other than that, majority of the projects are under budget or on budget. I would only say that the sidewalk project there is an ongoing project, it's not, oh, not, I'm sorry, not the sidewalk project, the streetlight management plan is an ongoing project, so that's something that we will continue to expand on. Last slide here, projects in progress, Michael Throne's group has quite a bit of projects remaining for the next six months, or, or, to be exact, four months and a half, I listed them in budget order from highest to lowest, and just provided some status there regards to when, where they are in the process, and also when it's expected to be done. Ideally, in a perfect world, we would want it to be done by June twenty-twenty-one, but we will shoot for that target and hopefully have all of these projects done by fiscal year-end. I can't take any credit for this part, this is really all of Michael Throne and his group and all their great work they've done, and also much more work to do, but looking forward to all the various projects to be done for the city. And open for any questions for both for Michael and myself.
Thank you, Director. Excellent. Mr. Shepherd-Rome, do you have any questions for my name, Director?
Thank you, thank you both for your enthusiasm, and I appreciate having the CIP here, having grateful to be here.
Dr. Wong, any questions?
No, just want to thank you, you know, for your great work, and also thanks to the Public Force Director and the Vista Car.
Mr. Powell?
The street rehabilitation, thank you, the mayor of the street rehabilitation, are we, we still have work to do in that for this year, or is it actually completed, and if it is completed, how did we bring it under budget for almost one point three million? Is it because less was done?
Uh, thank, thank you. There we go. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Tal, that project was designed by an outside consultant, and we're using the costs from the prior year, and so we thought we were going to have about a three point two million dollar project, it came in, obviously about a third lower than that, and that was primarily due to the fabulous bids we had at the time, so the project that we're developing for this fiscal year is three and a half million dollars, I asked the designer to use last year's prices, which were very good, that will be looking to get a, a three point two, three point three million dollar project to you based on using the quantity and cost from last year, so we came in low primarily because we were using costs from the prior year when asphalt is more expensive.
Okay, yeah, because I'm a little confused, because it says projects in progress, three rehabilitation, three point five million dollar budget, and it's, it's listed as in design, which one is that, is that nineteen twenty, or twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-one, twenty-two, which one's in design?
The one that's in design is this year's, which is twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
The one that you see as being completed was nineteen twenty.
Oh, that helps me. Okay, but we didn't do any less than what was originally budgeted?
No, we did exactly what your payment management plan said that we should do, it just came in much less expensively than we had estimated.
Well, so, thank you.
So David, councilman was clearly sad about the money we're approving.
Okay, so I want to congratulate the fabulous trio with our financial work, you always put out something that's very clear, easy for us to read, and also Director Throne, thank you for all the projects that are coming, double them all, and we are really starting to see a wonderful improvement with the streets and the sidewalks, so thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you, no questions, just comments, I just love to see the reinvesting back into the community, I guess wonderful, and Director Throne, congratulations on managing all those projects, I will appreciate that. And then on your projects completed slide, the finance guy in me says the positive number is, or when you're doing the math, a savings is a negative number, and a over budget is a positive number. Do we need a motion to receive and file this in?
I do.
Okay, is there a motion?
Was there a public comment on this?
So, no?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat, so you got this correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, Director. Is there any comments from the public, in here or virtually?
There are no requests for that.
All right, bring it back to council for further discussion or thoughts, Mr. Dr. Wong?
No, no comment, thank you.
No, but thank you for the wonderful report, and thank you, Director Throne, and everyone for their hard work to make sure that our dollars are being wisely spent and recovered.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, and thank you for Director Throne and his team for managing those that came in since the restroom in such a wonderful way. So we came out of it. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No further comments. Thank you.
No further comments here. Can we have a motion to receive and file? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rooming?
Yes.
Councilmember Thol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar and some information to the public and a reminder for council and some information for council. We move the consent calendar to the end to deal with the more important issues with the public upfront. See that there are more items in the consent calendar? Because working with the vice mayor and the city manager, we took the position that if there was a project that was approved by the council and it was just the expenditure of that, the funds for that project, it was prior approved. And if the budget was less than or equal to the approved amount, we'd put it on the consent calendar in the interest of time. You still have the opportunity to pull it, pull one off, obviously, if you like to. And then also, since we're going to do a roll call on this, if you want to register your vote as a no on any one of the consent items, you can do that during the roll call by saying, you know, yes, but for item number eight, I want to leave on record as being no. If that makes sense. Okay? Now, does anyone want to pull anything off of the consent calendar? Dr. Wong?
No, thank you.
Nope.
Mr. Shepherd-Rooming?
Yeah, I'm aware of the number 14, 15, 17, and 18.
Move here. Right here. 14, 15?
Yes, please. 17?
17.
And 18. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have nothing I wish to pull. Thank you.
Then it looks like we're looking for a motion to approve items 6, 7, 9, 10, 11. Oil 13, 16, 19, 20, and 21. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rooming?
Yes.
Councilmember Thol?
Yes, but for, I'd like to register a vote on number 11 as a no.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
I am a yes, but I also want to unfortunately vote no on 12. I'm still hearing from the community, not feeling clear about that. Thank you.
All right, and Mayor Yee?
I will vote yes, with the exception of item number 11, which I'd like to be registered as a no.
All right, thank you. All of those consent items do pass. 5-0 with the exception of number 11, which passes by a 3-2 vote, and number 12, which passes by a 4-1 vote.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number 14, the award of the professional design services for the lift station improvement program. Director Throne, please. And maybe in the interest of time, Councilwoman Shepherd-Rooming, do you want to ask any specific questions for him? Or would you like to get it over to you first?
I can answer. What are we comfortable with?
Why don't we, why don't we still release? Doesn't there work? And Shepherd-Rooming has some questions.
I do, and this has to do with the issue that I brought up earlier. I think all of them involve lack of any competitive bidding, informal or formally. This one in particular is to the company that actually did the assessment for it, I believe, if I'm reading the prior work that DUDIT?
DUDIT.
Yes. Oh, sorry. So the company is currently working on the assessment and the cost estimate for this. And now they're the only firm to bid on this project. And they're from quite far away, Encinitas, which, so I was surprised and wanted to know what efforts that he went through. I know Planet FID, it says here to submit, and I don't know if there's another way to get bids on the work that might help us save money.
Well, we use Planet FID as our advertisement service for not only construction projects, but for design. Planet FID is subscribed to by all the marquee designers that I've worked with in the past. And they do pay attention when they see that there's a request for design proposals. In this particular case, as DUDIT had already done the design, I suspect that most of the other firms looked at that and said, well, we'll just, we'll pass on that. Given that there's an extensive amount of research that has to be done if you're coming in fresh to look at our lift stations and design something. Last summer, I asked DUDIT to provide me with a cost proposal to do one lift station. And their cost proposal last summer was $59,000, which is why I did not bring that to the council at the time. So in January, I had decided that I really wanted to get this project underway and felt that bringing a project to the designers of designing three lift stations instead of one would make it more attractive for the design firms that do this kind of work. After advertising it for three weeks, the only proposer that I got was DUDIT. And you'll see that their cost proposal at $73,000 for three lift stations is certainly a better unit cost than one lift station for $59,000. They've performed very satisfactory for us in the past doing condition assessments. And I'm very confident that even though they are in Encinitas, which is actually not that far away, as I kind of sort of live in that direction, they are very responsive. We do all of our meetings by Zoom. We get all of our plans back and forth. They are, they do come up here when they need to inspect things. And I found them to be very responsive. And that's why I'm comfortable with this recommendation.
All right. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the explanation, if you understand my concern about going continually back to the same view and possibly thinking of other ways we can get other. I, I, do they also, just curiosity, do they also, this is a design services agreement. Do they also do the building?
No, they do not do building. They do construction management and inspection. However, my practice is not to have those who design it get to inspect it. It's just good to separate those duties so that you just get a little bit more integrity in the inspection and in the design if they're working by separate companies.
All right. I appreciate you answering my questions and definitely my concerns that they continue to work. Thank you.
Mr. Thol, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you, Dr. Wong.
No, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yep, thank you.
I have no questions. Is there a move? Oh, is anybody from the publicists here, would they like to comment on this? Any comments from out there?
There are no requests to come on there.
And we'll bring it back to council. Does any council member have any comments they'd like to comment on? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
I move to award a professional design services agreement amount of $73,075 to DUDIT of Encinitas, California, which is attached as attachment one in staff report for preparation of plan specification, cost estimates for the lift station improvement program. Authorize the city manager to execute agreement on behalf of the city and authorize the director of public health authority to issue design change orders not to exceed $7,500.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rooming?
Yes.
Councilmember Thol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Let's move on to item number 15. Chief DeConter? Let's try the same format, Gretchen. Wanted to bring in, she had any specific question, do you want to ask the chief?
Again, it comes down to competitive bidding. I understand from your report that we are contracting, kind of true, we're getting a comp benefit because this particular company goes through HDAV live contract. And I did look them up, and I looked up other competitors. And it looks like there's over 1,000, check my card, excuse me. There's over 30 sort of government procurement groups like this that we can be a part of. Most of the cities are, I'm not understanding. The Department of Government Agency are advocating, are trying to buy to improve in that type of thing. So my concern is, again, I think this is a lot of money for the, what looks to me, it'll be so, but I'm concerned that we did not get it.
Really came down to the cooperative pricing, being that there was already a cooperative pricing go-to. So it was easier to just go that route, being that we knew that it was, the pricing was already set up. That's really what it came down to.
It does, but my point bringing up that there are other cooperative pricing agreements, did we look at other vendors or the other groups that have been looking? Or is this vendor that might be a different program? That might have a better price?
For me, being that I am the procurement officer, every contract P O that comes through to my desk, I have to sign. And I do review that. If it comes to me and says if they want to waive it for whatever reason, it is my decision to see why, needing to ask why. Is it, is the bill was bitter? If it's a cooperative pricing, in this case, I look at that avenue and talk to the chief and see why is this the best avenue for the city? And that's when I make that decision cooperatively together. And we move forward with recommending that to the council.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for the director vice mayor. What is the general, what your experience with the savings that we get through these cooperative purchasing programs?
To be honest, I'm not sure about savings on pricing. I do believe that these cooperative, they're competitive. That's one thing. But then also it moves the process faster. Than going through all full-on bidding and researching and doing all that. These cooperative agreements are found in a lot of public safety areas where they want to move quickly to procure these items. Sometimes they're specialized. Sometimes you don't have vendors, options. But most of the time, the pricing is competitive and that it helps you to be more agile, to move faster, procuring these items.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wong?
No question. Thank you.
May I apologize? I'd like to weigh in on that item as well. We've had a couple of concerns about the way the bidding has been done specifically tonight. So it may be that it would be even less to have an additional conversation at a later meeting. The code is set up to permit staff to waive the normal bidding process in certain arenas. That's designed to help us be more efficient and to get things done quicker and spend our time doing other things. As I mentioned earlier today, COVID, for example, is one of those things that we're doing a lot of. If the council would prefer that we not utilize those exceptions that the code permits, we might want to think about changing that a little bit. Certainly, we want to do what it is that you want us to do. But that's, that's the philosophy that we've been working on, is that if the code permits us to exempt from the bidding process, we pursue that.
Yeah, and since it's directed at the question I asked, I'm just trying to get a better idea in, in understanding how these block of purchasing programs. I understand that expediency is important, but expediency is always advisable. And for public safety, it probably is, because you see the need, you get it. However, we should probably explore this in some kind of the future so we can get a better understanding of something like this.
Right, and I just want to respond. I think that because you can do something, doesn't mean you shouldn't.
Correct.
And so I have a problem that so many things, the platforms at the time, they're all coming forward. With the competitors, some are quite modest and some are larger. And they're coming without any competition at all. So that's a concern for me, and I think it would be for our community members as well.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. Some additional discussion would probably be useful.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Just point of clarification. Is this the same as the, I believe, the CMS state program? Is it, is it the same one where the state has experience with different vendors? And they sort of give that stamp of approval and they're off of the list? And I believe that was initially how we went with Intellisys, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It is not the state or is that the practice of the company?
Right, but what I'm trying to reference is the state gets these different vendors that have had good experience within the state. And they sort of give them a stamp of approval and they go on this list. They can be from different areas. And if anyone knows what that acronym is, CMS?
CMES, the one you're speaking of.
AS, CMES?
There are several.
Okay.
The ones you're picking out that we, I believe that Intellisys one through is CMES. But there are several.
AS, okay. Okay, so thank you. Yeah, I guess it would be something for the future if there's a number of these coming up.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you. Public comment? Is there any public comments from this room today? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the virtual world?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council. Can you, councilmembers have any final thoughts or considerations they'd like to share? And can I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize city manager to approve the procurement installation of two communications center consoles in amounts not to exceed $3,899.96 from Russ Basset Cooperation Corporation.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Rooming?
No.
Councilmember Thol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll go on to item 17 now. Approval of Homeland, or a state homeland security program grant for the purchase of automated license plate readers. Director Thon? Mr. Shepherd-Rooming, what questions do you have of Director Thon, please?
This might be more directed to the chief. I was, I have a question. I understand these are the license plate readers that go on the cars, on the vehicle, excuse me, instead of fits around the city. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And do we at present have KLRs on our existing vehicles?
We have two cameras on one car, three cameras on another one. However, the system that is utilized for it is with a company that no longer exists, so we don't have any service. Also, the way that system works, because it's so old, we have to physically download information daily. So it doesn't work very well. In fact, most times it doesn't work.
Okay, and so is that what you refer to? Is that, I'm just confused. I don't know if you have the report in front of you. 17, page two, the first whole paragraph toward the top. It talks about here that we currently lease 22 ALPRs. And this would be for the purchase of portable oil. Are they two different things? Is that referring to our flock system?
Yes, it is. The Homeland Security Grant does not allow for the lease of equipment. So we're not able to use the same type of cameras or the same company or a similar system. And we have to have them on a portable, they have to be portable. So that's why they're on a vehicle. And there's a different operating system.
And then, okay, so that's, I thought we were, our city, if you will, are benefiting on our residents and as well as it was making improvements with your police officers' ability to be on the flock system. I think it sounded like it was very good and you've got good results in us being under this lease. And just in the last, I don't know, maybe you can help me here a second. I don't know how long it's been. So my concern would then be to move away from the flock and instead go to another fixed system, which you have the burden of both maintenance, which you avoid with the leasing, as well as maintenance repairs, storage, all those things that the flock seem to answer and would cost additional time and money to the city. And so to move away from that, I am very appreciative of getting a grant. But, you know, that would help cover this cost. But I'm But I'm just concerned that we're moving back to a system that's not as old as the money we got rid of, and I thank you for that, but we're actually maybe going to make more expenses for the city in terms of maintenance, storage, and all those things that the FLOC helped us. Lots of results are, I thought that FLOC tied into other communities around us, and you were able to share information which we, I don't know if this other is the location.
My answer is going to be as complex as your question. FLOC safety, our cameras that are leased, as part of the lease, they pay for the connectivity, they pay for maintenance, and they pay for replacement if one breaks. They also pay for the storage. It's part of the fund or the fees for storage on this lease with FLOC. FLOC safety does not make any cameras for a vehicle. They are currently speaking to Axon, which is the company that makes TASER. And they also have body cameras, et cetera. Axon's main funding or main revenue is from the storage of data. Hopefully, it won't be too complex, and if I do, tell me, Scott. But Axon has no vehicle camera system at this time. So we, as part of the Homeland Security Grant, which is funding, a big grant funding available to all cities in Los Angeles County that do not border the city of Los Angeles, we are allowed to get funding through this grant. The chiefs in Los Angeles County, through an agreement with the county of Los Angeles, discuss an appropriate use of the funding by all agencies. Otherwise, a singular agency could say, "No, I want all this funds" that are being issued for the grant, and it would leave no funding or grant funding for any other city. So the chiefs agree on a type of device, equipment through the grant. Two years ago, we received portable radios through this grant. Approval tonight doesn't mean that we will need, that we take the money and do this. What it means is just to allow us to move forward through the process.
All right, and do you have, the agreement tonight, right, is a prospective grant, should you find the right vendor, et cetera. And it would replace the FLOC system at that time? Once this is fully, or this is in addition to?
Totally different. If, if, if the council remembers, we originally were going to get a camera system for the intersection of Huntington and San Marino. We, that gave us eight cameras for the same cost of the 22 FLOC cameras without, and then we would own the equipment, and we would have to pay for connectivity, and we would have to pay for storage. So these are two different systems.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, is there any other question?
No, thank you.
Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Is it Dr. Wong?
No.
Vice chair?
No, thank you.
Other questions? Are there any public comments either here or virtually?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Any other council members have any, any questions about the matter? And is there a motion, please?
I move to, sorry about this, to authorize the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the county of Los Angeles for the 2019, I'm sorry, I'm not reading that number, State Homeland Security, thank you. So moved to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Grommet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Move on to item number 18. Approval of the notice of completion for the street rehabilitation project. Who's Shepherd-Grommet? What questions might you have of Director Thrun?
Thank you. Director Thrun, I wanted to express to you the concern of the community, although you probably know firsthand, but I could tell you that I was receiving daily emails, section calls when the project was underway about problems with the contractor in terms of the delay in some areas of the city that went on for quite a while, as well as the work that was done when it was messy, and problems cleaning it. Then somewhere through the project, we lost the inspector that was kind of keeping an eye on all of that. And I, so one question that I have is, is the inspector coming from and part of the same contract that you have, that a normal job would have with the company? Do they provide their own inspector, or was that a matter of us as a city having money in addition to the construction contract where we bring in an outside inspector? And how did that not line up?
We bring in an outside contract inspector. When we brought in our inspector, we had estimated that it was going to cost $30,000 based on the schedule that the prime contractor, All American Asphalt, had provided us, and what we said that this is how long the project's going to take. All American went much longer than they had anticipated, and frankly, I think that they were quite upset with their subcontractor, which was the striping contractor, who was the one that caused them 66 days of delay. By the time that occurred, we ran out of our authority to keep our contract inspector on as we had had a $30,000 contract, which was, there was enough appropriation for that within the budget. There just wasn't authority, and as we were thinking the project was going to be done the next week, the next week, the next week, we did not bring anything back to council to add any more, any more dollars to that. In retrospect, hindsight being like it is, what we're going to be doing with our upcoming project that I really intend to spend every penny of your three and a half million dollars is that we'll be bringing a, a contract to you for a full-time public works inspector for the project. It'll certainly be more than $30,000, and that will ensure that we will have a person on board at all times and also have the funding available and the authority in just in case that contractor goes long. If, if a contractor exceeds their, their scheduled completion and you assess liquidated damages, we're only allowed to assess $250 unless we can show that there are more costs involved. So for instance, if we have a contract inspector and the asphalt contractor goes long, and now we're incurring additional costs for that, we can assess that to the asphalt contractor. This is our plan for, for this year's project in order not to duplicate the, the problems that we had. Especially the folks on Mission Street, they, they had to wait a long time for their striping, and it probably wasn't the greatest work done. And we're going to make sure that we don't duplicate that, that situation again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And one other area I want to follow up on. I, I think it would be great if we did that, because they did a math, and I was shocked that it was only $250 a day when you have a 2.1 or whatever with the amount of the contract. So it probably was not that much, like a little plea on our high if they get the project done at some point. But the other issue was quality of the work. I mean, they were painting house numbers, and I would get called at the end of the day if people came home and their house numbers would be inverted. And I was astonished that they have the number 1234, let's say, right in front of them, and then they do 1243. I mean, and then it required, I think, you guys to come out on sort of an emergency basis, because you can't let that for emergency home safety deliveries. I mean, that is perhaps many things happening to these residents. So I appreciate your department stepping forward and completing, correcting that work. But my concern is also, how do we deal with that in the next one, in the next contract situation in terms of the bidders or who finally gets the part?
If I can represent just as I'm processing the conversation, these are great suggestions for approving the next year's street improvement program. So I'm wondering if Director Thrun, when he brings that proposal, should have, what were the things that did not go well with this last year, what the learnings were, so that we can make sure that that doesn't happen again. But the idea would be for us is to file the completion of the work behind us. What you're bringing up is good points to think about for the projects that are ahead of us.
Right, and I want to make sure that we also get cost recovery for staff time, for example, if we need to, not just what you're saying, the extended inspector. My point of bringing this over is if it takes staff time to correct mistakes, like the painting, then that should also be something that we expect to be able to assess against the final payment. Because this year was, had multiple problems, and I believe the city did use the time that we're at this work rate and it probably did some costs to us. That's in the future, I hope we can avoid, if I can get a contractor and receive. Thank you.
Dr. Wong, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Tom?
No, vice chair?
No, thank you.
Any comments from the public, either here or virtually?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts from council members? If seen none, is there a motion, please? Is there a motion, please?
I move to accept street rehabilitation program project number 19-9271, constructed by All American Asphalt of Corona, as complete and authorized the city clerk to file the notice of completion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Grommet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We move on to our final public comments. Is there any person here or any person virtually that might like to make any comments to the city council?
There are no requests for comments at this time.
Thank you. And seeing none. Would city council members like to suggest any items that they'd like to see for future agendas?
I would. I'm not necessarily think this, this, make an agenda item for the city that we should consider, that the community services department has spent a wonderful job servicing our seniors and other members of our community. It's a really underserved group of people in town right now who have spent almost a year in school, in online school. And some of them will be graduating either from fifth, eighth, or senior. I would like to see if we could put together a, a program to, to honor these people in a way that's meaningful for the city of San Marino.
Honor, like?
Honor the, the, those that are either graduate, well, it's not really a graduation, fifth grade, but definitely those moving on, graduated from Huntington, and those graduating from San Antonio High School or public, our city public schools. Would we put together a program, whether it be with the, with the school district or not? I'd be perfectly.
That's a great idea.
But I, I think that we is the, we might have to be the driving force of that.
And all I was concerned was not replicating, you know, they do the yard side.
We'll work with them.
Oh, that would be great if we could do a partnership.
So the request is for community service to come back with some proposals?
Except.
Okay. So we need three, three people. I hear two. Dr. Wong?
Oh, I can.
Okay, good. Are there any other items that people would like to see in future, Jen?
I do. I would like to agendaize and put up with council consideration as taking a position or joining a group that is advocating to retain local control of issues in our city. This is something that grassroots organization that started in July of this year. They invite council members to, and right now, there are, I believe, 46 cities. They have 330 elected officials from across the state who are supporting their efforts in the single focus. There is no physical impact to our cities. And they have a draft resolution that we can pass on to our city attorneys, as well as staff and the vibe. But I'd like to have this on agenda items, so we can also add our support. It's, it doesn't matter to you, Long, this member, and I as well individually, but I'd like to see that.
I'm writing this, well.
Okay, and I can see you on the map.
Was there support? Okay, yes, good. Thank you for this suggestion.
Vice chair.
Are there any other items?
Excuse me, Mary Yudi?
Yeah.
Um, we, we went over the written communications or public writings distributed item.
We did not. Do we have any written communications or published writings for distribution?
We did not have any at this time. We want to make sure that.
Thank you. Did I miss anything else? Seeing that I didn't miss anything else?